Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of October 10, 2017. It is also the public hearing for general assistance. First item is a salute to the flag. I'd like to open the public hearing for general assistance if we have any questions or comments from the public regarding general assistance. Any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any, no.
My name is Paul Point. My question is, from year to year, we tend to see the available hours and basically the means of requesting general assistance to be kind of diminished compared to what it was in prior years. Is there any plan on changing any of that this year as compared to last year?
General assistance is available, they can apply, you know, anytime the town hall is open. Up until the door was replaced about two weeks ago, there's a, there's a form on the outside of the door that says that if you need general assistance and this office is closed and it's an emergency, you can call this number. And that's posted on the outside of the door. So essentially, they can apply anytime that...
So I assume that that is a change from, from prior years because I'm pretty sure that there was one person who would take general assistance applications on a certain day on a certain hour.
Well, that's, that's, that's still the case. I mean, we, you know, general assistance, just because it's, you know, the saying that they have in all of their trainings is, you know, lack of preparation on your part doesn't make it an emergency on the town's part. I mean, if anybody calls for general assistance, we immediately, all the call, all the calls come to me and we determine what the situation is. I mean, if the, you know, if we're in the middle of winter and the lights were turned off yesterday, then that's an emergency and we would get them in that day. If it's October 1st and you're looking for help for November rent, then that's not an emergency and that can wait until next Tuesday. So it's handled per situation.
But somebody can come into the town hall, grab one of those applications and get the process started.
Correct, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Having no other questions or comments, we will move into the Selectmen's Meeting. Do I have an approval for the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
All in favor. A motion to approve the minutes of September 29th. Is that what I just read? Twenty-six? That sounds right.
Make a motion, we approve September 26 minutes.
And I'll second that.
All in favor.
Did you see at top, I put a little, um, would you mind doing that presentation at the top?
Oh, yep. We will have a presentation from Iron Tails next. Sorry.
This is Bruce.
Hi, Bruce.
I'm going to come up and tell you a little bit about it.
Hi, everybody.
Bruce Ross Burrow?
Yeah.
Did I say that right?
I represent Iron Tail Slum on behalf of Greg Martinez. About 10 weeks ago, we started a cruise night. We did 50/50 drawings and part of the pot, we decided to go to the town of Acton, Neighbors Helping Neighbors Fund. We are very glad to donate $575.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate that.
And gentlemen, do this stand with me?
Stand with us.
That's not right. All right, Bruce.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Amelia will receive tomorrow if you can have it made.
Next year, we will hopefully get a full year in with cruise nights, so, and we're also going to be adding a vintage motorcycle show too, so we'll come and help the town again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Have a good night. Department head, committee chair, updates. We have the road committee.
I want to make sure you had the right one.
Sure, thank you.
This week, I sent you the MMA letter that we had reviewed before, that we got a little while back. And if, and what I'm here about tonight basically is talking about the camp road situation that we discussed last week. On the bottom of the letter, second page, he gets into regarding the use of town equipment on private roads and went on to say the statutory site allows for limited use of town equipment for the purpose of fire and police protection. At the same time, we were asking about the turnarounds. So he said, "I would not use this to, an assessment for the purpose of, of the turnarounds, look in the MMA manual, which discusses more." We got into that and we found out the exact laws. Now, those are the laws you have in front of you. If you look down to 3105 at the bottom, this is all that would apply to what the road committee wants to do this fall. It's use of town equipment, fire and police protection, protecting or restoring a great pond. The inhabitants of any town or village corporation at a legal town or village corporation meeting may authorize the municipal officers of the town or assessors of the village corporation to use its highway equipment on private roads, private ways or bridges within the town or village corporation whenever the municipal officers or assessors consider it advisable in the best interests of the town or village for fire and police protection and for the purposes of protecting or restoring a great pond as defined in Title 38 further on. We don't have to get into that until the spring if we deal with work there. Then if you go down to the bottom, you see E. The private road, private way or bridge is maintained by a road association organized under this subchapter of Title 13B. If you go back to the first page, call of meeting, this is what forms a statutory road association. This is what the roads have done, 13th Street, the big ones that are, that are dealing and doing work on their roads. It means they've contacted everyone on the road legally, they have formed their meetings legally, and this is who we can deal with in this situation. It will clear up, what it, what it amounts to is that we can call a town meeting, a special town meeting. Perhaps this isn't too late to bring it into the one that is already coming up in November and in this way, clear up the situation that we have on 13th Street where we did not get easements. Here, the, the road association has to get, you get back to the top of this on 3101, they cite three out of four. Well, this interpreted back means three quarters of the road must sign these public easements. One person cannot hold up a whole road by this. These road committees would collect the public easements. We would, as a road committee, check them over. It's up to you as selectmen to choose or not to choose to put this onto a warrant for a special election. It can also be done by warrant from people in the town if they choose to ask for a special election for this. I got a, a letter today, an email today, and I won't read all of this, but this came from a gentleman in Acton out on Tattle Street, and I mentioned that last week. They had had a big dust problem out there. Now, Shapley went in and they paved part of the road. We share this area with them. We drive over and we're only, we drive three miles over there, we plow Lebanon Road, and we come back to town. We're right there at Tattle Street. If we pick up that plowing off of them, then they, they also are organized properly. If we take that plowing expense and put our plow in there, it saves them that money to go back in and do the work they have to do around the shoreland. Because once they get into the shoreland zoning, then it's the DEP issues and it has to be dealt with, you know, not with us. It's a higher authority. But I wanted to give you this and show you the laws and say that, yes, this is the way to do it. I know there are different opinions on this, but this is the straight law and this is how it says what we can do. The other thing I wanted to ask about is, we had been, we started with the bridge, the bridges were always with the road committee. I know they've been turned over now to the road commissioner, and I'm wondering what progress has been made specifically on the Hopper Road Bridge.
They're providing updates next week.
Okay, well, I have been down to look at it every few days because the work has been done and they've, they've cut brush and, and this is good, but I know everyone is busy at this time of year. And, and I called back and asked young Jason Maury about the dam that we had. I mentioned last week, we had, thought we had seen a farther split. He went down to look at it and he couldn't see it because Great East Lake has let out now. But apparently, when they let the lake out, it put a lot more pressure on that dam, the water was actually spraying through it. So that, I don't know if that has been checked up on, but it should be. And the good news in all of this is that Jason Maury and a group from the Hopper Road have volunteered to go down and finish the cleanup on that bridge and remove the graffiti and paint it. And if the town could supply the paint, he'll go in with a crew of young Hopper Road people that are interested in preserving it and getting rid of the graffiti. And if we supplied them with a sealer paint, it might preserve that bridge a little bit longer. I know we're all waiting for the report on it this fall to see what's going to happen, but it was only a 32 years ago and there's been, I haven't been under it, but Jason was able to get under it apparently fishing with his boat. And where you see the hole in the top and you look at the downstream side on the left-hand side, you'll see where the, the salt water from the road has gone down into the concrete through that hole and has come out there and taken out that portion right around the inside of that corner. And apparently, it's underneath too, which you can't see unless you can get really down under. And we still have that posted at 60,000 pounds. I, I question that, that weight. And we also have two different posting signs on it. One means you can go over it with a truck that weighs 60,000 pounds. The other one means you can go over a truck empty. I mean, a truck weighing 60,000 pounds, so they do mean two different things and that we should have that clarified. Any questions or? We're having a road committee meeting right after this and we're going over these laws because our committee hasn't done this. Tomorrow night, the camp roads are getting together with their meeting. I'm going to go to it. We'll see who's organized, how, and what we can possibly do. But we do have, remember, every year, we've got a pretty flexible budget when it comes to our plowing. And if that's the key, that we can pick that up for a fast help, that gives them the money to go in in the spring and especially on a road like Eagle where we're getting that runoff through a septic system into Wilson, that's the kind of thing you want to jump on. I think everybody likes to swim there and we don't want to hear about any coal eye outbreak.
So you're showing us this paperwork, just to clarify, today, to see how we, that the town would possi, can legally pick up plowing these private roads so these private roads can then use the money to repair them correctly?
Right. These roads are organized with budgets and planning and they, they want to do it. It's just when, as I said, with Eagle, it's a $2,000 cost for them to even begin to start for the engineering. Once you get into the shoreline zoning, you have to do everything absolutely right. Now, the one way we may be able to help them, Garvin Road is ours and that 12-inch culvert that I was talking about up above, that's spewing out like a fire hose with the whirlpool on the other side, could possibly be mitigated. I've looked at it a couple of times. Dennis Long is familiar with it, I'm sure Scott is. I'd like to talk to Scott because perhaps there could be checks that would keep the water more on that side of the road so it would go down into the swamp and then filter gracefully down the stream rather than cross the road and pour down over another road. So that, that is something that could be picked up in the town budget. I, and where the plowing budget is flexible and also the fact that maybe with new techniques, we can save some money, I, I really would like you to consider it.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is the special town meeting is this Thursday at, at seven.
There's another one, November 28th.
That's, that's a ballot vote.
Oh, okay.
Eight yes, no, that's not a meeting.
How long does it take to get a special town meeting?
They can post it as short as seven days if they chose.
Well, then, wow, all right. And this would clear up the legal problems with 13th Street. And, and in that case, we'd be plowing the whole of 13th Street. We plow about three quarters of it now and pick up the other end of it. And again, that gives their money, they, they did not want to be, they didn't want to be a town road. They want to be able to keep, improve their road and they, they're doing a watershed analysis now on the Mussum Lake area. And I'm sure they're, they're going to find areas off of their avenues that they're going to want to repair. We're already picking it up all the way to Covewood and this just take, you know, takes the burden off and makes it legal. They were easily organized and can get these, the easements they need, I'm sure. I know you have a lot of other stuff and we're going to meet right after this if anybody wants to come and get into it further.
Need to get some direction from the board, so I'm not, sorry, by making it clear, I don't, not agreeing or disagreeing with what Cindy's presented, but this is from 2009. This isn't a new law. And what some people may believe is that this allows them to go down those roads if there's a fire or police emergency. So the difference, I'm just, let me just, let them just hear it from me first because it's going to come up. So that's what some, some believe this law sets. So the difference of that versus the, the protection and the way that it's, you know, you're going to have to have it determined if that's how you interpret it or if you want to have, you know, a, a legal team review it, but that's what the other side is going to say is that that's what they believe it says. Because it has come up before.
No, I know, I know that and...
Just wanted them to hear it all, you know, so they could...
No, I'm good on that. And I, and you know Dicky Goodwin over in Shapley?
Yes.
Well, this is, I talked to him.
Recently?
Um, no, it was a couple of years ago, but it was when they took on, I was curious as to how Shapley did it and how we didn't. And he explained, this is the technique that they used, the three quarters of the road with the public easements. They also use our same lawyer. And 13th Street does and so does our road, so I, I think the only problem we had with that, that perhaps Brad did not realize, that we had a town road ordinance and we're violating...
Yeah, I don't think he was our attorney at the time. I'm not sure that he reviewed this.
Yeah, so he didn't know that we had a town ordinance. And that's where we ran into the, run into the only other problem. Our town ordinance prevents us from doing this.
Okay.
And it also has not been a helpful document. It's only been utilized once and on Peacock.
So do you believe, do you believe that the ordinance, the road ordinance has to be changed and then the town has to, and then the selectmen have to amend?
Well, I think it should be eliminated because the state has clearly put out how they want to do it.
Right.
I, I think it was a good effort with good intentions, but it didn't, it didn't do what, what needed to be done.
So what is it exactly that you, that you believe can happen? With the correct amount of three quarters easements, that the board can have a special town meeting and vote to accept these roads?
And people can come and vote.
Okay.
And we'll have a list of the roads. And I believe it can be absorbed into our, our budget already without a huge increase.
This is just for plowing, you're saying, right?
Just plowing.
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
So what direction, if any, does the board have?
I don't, I don't see how we can absorb it into the budget. I mean, the budget is set on the roads that we have. How are you going to, how many, how many miles of road are we going to add?
Well, I don't know. We'll get back to you next week with that. But you're going by some of them anyway.
I mean, I just, I want to hear from them.
So it's not, you might be picking up six tenths of a mile here, you know, that sort of thing. But you're going by the road and Tattle Street really doesn't make sense not to plow that so they can get their easements.
If you're going to open it up, you, you're probably going to open it up to every private road that has a road, a road association.
Well, if they're properly organized. If they're, and we should, we should. I, I, you know, there's really no excuses not to, or at least not to allow the opportunity to vote on it.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just, I'd like to know how many miles of road we're talking.
I will. I'll give it to you next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing that I need to do?
Uh, no, not, we'll see how many miles we're looking at. Three Rivers Land Trust.
Just a little update and a few questions. I guess, we got off to a rough start last week with the trail, but things got worked out, so they had a pretty good week up there. One of the questions I have is, we have volunteers come in, is that okay on the town's end and help with the trail?
Are these the volunteers outside of the nature conserve that we got the insurance for?
Other than the main conservation corps, correct.
Are these people that sit on town committees now that would already be covered under our liability?
I don't know. Maybe some, but I doubt all of them.
I guess the cleanest thing to do is to provide us a list with, because the town certainly allows for volunteers and we have a waiver piece in our insurance, but similar to the rec and coaches, you know, we need to know who it is ahead of time.
One would be the, some of the students at the Maplestone School would like to volunteer.
Good. I talked to him about it. I talked to him about it last week.
Yeah, and I mean, I, you know, I'd have to, I'd look into it.
Do you have a, like a volunteer form that waives some?
Yeah, we have a, but, I mean, these are minors, though.
Minors, correct.
Oh.
That might be an issue.
Yeah.
Younger than 18, you're saying?
Right, it's a minor, yeah.
Yeah, they're younger than 18.
But I'm thinking that, that the school has their own liability insurance because they must take them to all types of different places.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they have their own insurance.
I mean, I'd have, you know, I'd have to get an answer. I'm not going to, I can't say it right on the spot. When are you hoping for them to start volunteering tomorrow?
Always, it's always soon. I mean, do you want a copy of their, if their insurance company sends you?
So are those the only minors at the, so the school is the Maple, Maplestone, right?
So far. I mean, there are some adults that have often volunteered too.
And what kind of, I mean, they're going to be using chainsaws or are they going to be picking a brush?
Mainly picking up brush.
So...
The Maplestone, they might use a small chainsaw, not the students, but the teacher.
Okay.
Because some of the brush is long, they might cut it up a little bit so it stacks a little better to get it out of the way, that type of thing, but it would be the, the teacher using it.
So if we get, if we get clearance, you're fine with them volunteering?
Yes.
Okay.
Give me a half a day at least to look into it.
We could talk to Keith tomorrow.
Sure.
Full day preferably.
Okay. The other, the other part of the trail that when we applied for the grant was, we did apply with the hopes of eventually making it ADA compatible. Is that something that the board feels is an endeavor to, to try to do? It's not costing the town any money?
Right.
I think all along, you've told us that.
Yeah, I think a lot of residents are looking forward to having it ADA compliant.
Yeah, okay.
I have heard that feedback.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure because it's town property and, you know.
Have you run into an issue that you're considering not or, I mean, that you're, no, no, okay.
No, 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 I just want to make sure everything's updated and people...
Yeah, last week when we talked about the trail, I think it was, kind of talked about the AD, you know?
Yeah, I think when you showed us the map last week, you showed us some switchbacks and whatnot to help make it ADA compatible, so.
It's a goal. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it's a goal, yeah. And the only other thing I think is, is the parking lot, which we have to review with Ken.
Yes, you and I and Scott and Ken, so I'll try to make that appointment for maybe the end of the week.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And they are making good progress. I mean, there will be a trail there this fall.
Thanks.
It's not ADA, but it'll be a trail. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Forest Conservation Committee.
Tom Gashen, evening, folks. Last year, when the Forestry and Conservation Committee meeting was discussing the idea of a multi-use right-of-way on the Hebo-Hibo Road, there was a request from some in the town to look into the use of that road to access the town forest lot, which is interior, about halfway down, I guess. It's very close to the Lebanon line on the Hebo-Hibo Road. And Jennifer was kind enough to insert in your, your folders tonight some meeting minutes from the Forest and Conservation Committee of September 19th. No?
They're via email, they didn't, they're not.
Oh, okay.
They're looking for their folder going, why? No, she didn't.
So I'm here in, in the place of the committee to ask for permission to pursue the legal answer to the right-of-way question that we need to pursue with Joe Lankowski, I guess. The assumption is that a resident of Acton would have legal right-of-way to access a town-owned property. We're not sure of that, but that would, that would kind of follow common law dictates, but we're not sure how it would pertain to a non-resident. And the, the goal of this little project would be to have a through-access passive recreational trail through the Lebanon end of that trail, which abuts the Acton end, obviously. And then further, it would intersect with a trail system in Sanford, which, the name of which I can't recall, but, Carl, do you know what that is? What is that leg of that trail in Sanford that we'd be picking?
Well, it's by Mussum Way, I mean, it has Mussum, Mussum, but all the way up there.
And the, the, the uses of this, again, would be passive recreational. It's just a part of a community trail network that we're hoping to expand on. And we've, we've compiled a good bit of legal records that would help Joe or whomever would make the inquiry into the legal questions on this. Also, we can provide some funding assistance on the cost of the legal inquiry. Any questions?
No. I think that's a great idea. We don't have sidewalks here in Acton and the more trails that we can utilize to get out there, the better.
I hope to have the framework of the, of the work that we would be sending off to Joe ready for you to look at on the 17th. Okay.
Thank you.
We have Old Business Assistant CEO Job Description.
So last week, we passed out a sample job description that you were going to review and look at. We made, there was a couple of notes of things that, from Warren Finance and speaking to Mr. Paul, a couple of changes that we made, didn't know if you had a chance to review it. Any thoughts? Good time to mention that I did send an email to May Municipal as well, asking them assistant/deputy what their concerns, if any, were regarding that. Have not heard back from them yet. But speaking with, with Ken, I mean, a couple of options. I mean, he can certainly change the job description to say deputy to follow the Warren article if May Municipal says that it's a concern. Or you've always got the option that we talked about last week of making a motion to possibly adjust the article should the voters so choose on Thursday, so. But that word is still up in the air, but I don't think it really changes. Ken didn't think it would change the rest of the job description as far as how he would like to see that employee, but essentially, the job description is in your hands.
It looked fine to me. See what May Municipal comes back with.
So we won't accept it until we find out exactly what they have to say about that wording.
Definitely.
Okay, I don't think I get you a copy of it on this...
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Turnarounds.
Last week, the road committee discussed that and asked kind of where it stood. I did speak to road commissioners this evening and today, and as Elise stated, they're going to be prepared next week to be here for the opening of the sand bid. I did speak to road commissioners this evening and today, and as Elise stated, they're gonna be prepared next week to be here for the opening of the sand bid. Mr. Winchell said he has information on the bridges, he will share that, he's gotten paperwork back, and they will give you their thoughts on the turnarounds next week as well.
Marijuana Committee Member.
So I sent you guys an email, it started, I don't know, two weeks ago, maybe two and a half weeks ago now, time. Basically saying that a resident reached out to me, or she, actually, she is a resident now, she registered to vote today. So a resident reached out to me a few weeks back and said that when we opened it up for marijuana committee members, that she left me a voicemail essentially saying that she was interested. A variety of things we imagine could have happened, you saw the emails I sent back and forth. She, no one got back to her, essentially, so her name wasn't put in the hat. So, you know, being a non-binding committee that's, you know, just gathering information, I sent you all the documentation, seeing if you would consider adding her, because it was at the fault of our office, we're gonna go with. Just wanted to see your thoughts on it. Did you see the emails I sent you?
I have.
I have too.
Yeah, it's hard to tell exactly what happened, but either way, that would make seven members on the board. I don't see an issue.
I don't either, but are the other two that were in the bowl gonna come forward, wanting to be on, I just thought of that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
And they were.
In all fairness, this individual, I mean, this individual wasn't in the bowl, so most that could have happened is she could have been in the bowl and I could have, I mean. Honestly, I mean, these meetings are gonna be, they're gonna be open to the public, they're just gathering information, there's no decision-making. I mean, even the two that were left in the bowl can come to the meetings. I mean, it's not, you know, until you give them some sort of a binding, right, we haven't, you haven't appointed them, they're not taking an oath. They're collecting information on your behalf.
Right, and chances are, you know, somebody's gonna miss a meeting, so they'll still, I mean, they're probably gonna want everybody that they can make it.
I think more would be better than, yeah.
Hopefully she can make it on Friday.
So, her name is Carol Ward?
Ward, I was thinking Wade, Carol Ward.
So you want to add her to the committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Selectmen Meeting Times.
Okay.
I was gonna say that for the end, but yes, she's here, thank you.
Oh, she's here.
Sorry about all that, Carol, I tried to, I don't know what happened or how it happened, but welcome aboard.
Selectmen Meeting Times.
So, this was old, old from last week, I think a couple of people from the public mentioned selectmen meeting times. I know that you asked me to pull out some selectmen meeting books for you, so, what'd you find?
So what I found in reviewing the 2013 through 2015 meetings where they were posted at 7:00 PM, that the attendance actually was lower than what we've been seeing here at 5:00. So we're gonna stick with the 5:00. And, did you have something to add?
Well, I was gonna say, another reason too is, like, tonight, I gotta be at a school board meeting. Theirs starts at 6:00. I also would like to be at the road committee, but I can't do that because they're at 6:00 tonight, or you have.
Right, we also were liaisons for other committees that meet directly after.
So that was another reason, you know, just wondering how, you know, it doesn't really fit into our schedules to be able to go where we need to go.
Yeah, I think it was changed, what, 2015, 16?
No, I couldn't find, I think it was before that, because I found her the books.
Yeah. I don't remember the exact reasons why we changed it.
There's a variety of reasons, but.
Yeah, I know one, you know, we were meeting on a Thursday night, which made it difficult for you to attend because the office was open until 8:00, and our meetings were at 7:00, so, yeah, 5:00 seemed to work better for all involved, so. As far as the board and you, so.
I guess, I just don't want a chance losing the attendance that we're getting here at the 5:00 meetings. As always, there's.
Our, our.
I know the later you go, especially into winter, most people don't want to come back out once they've gone home, you know, 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night and.
Any public hearings we have and whatnot, we try to do those a little bit later and.
Yep.
Things of that nature, but.
Anything special, we do post later for people to get there after work. So.
Okay.
Thank you. Boat.
So, this is a follow-up conversation that has come up a couple of times in regards to the code enforcement officers' boat that was approved a few years back. Just trying to figure out, when the board's reviewed the concerns that have come forward, what you want to do with it. If you, there was some talk about possibly moving it to the fire station. There was, I think, a few different things, I'm just trying to tie up some loose ends and see what you, if you made it, what kind of decision you want to make on it.
Well, I feel that the boat being at Ken's house isn't an issue, it's not being misused. We're saving on boating fees, and I think that it can stay there until, you know, it's, seems to be misused, which it's not. In the meantime, I will talk to Chief Johnson and see if they needed a boat, but they do have one. The fire station does have one.
The one they have is a, basically, it's an aluminum rowboat with a nine-horsepower motor. It's not really all that great for, for what they do in today's world, so. They've had that boat, probably fifteen plus he is. But he's not really using it anymore, pushing to use it because he sees it more of as a liability, the one they have, so. Yep.
So you're good on the boat?
Yep.
Kim?
I'm fine right now, yep.
New Business Job Opening, CDL slash Road.
So I spoke to you guys individually last week before I ran the ad. One of the road commissioners contacted me and said that he was having a hard time finding CDL drivers to assist with the winter plowing, and that he also needed a couple of flaggers. In the past, the road commissioners have always found their own employees, they've always been, they're always still town employees. Essentially, somebody would walk in the door and say, oh, road commissioner A sent me up here, I'm gonna be a flagger, and, you know, they'd fill out all the paperwork and we'd go from there. They've always just kind of appeared and come forward. They, one of them has had an employee, possibly two, leave and is trying to prepare for winter. So he came to me and asked if the town could advertise it in the means that we generally do, including cable website, the Facebook page, Smart Shopper, because they're town employees. You okayed it, I have the ad here, maybe somebody's listening that wants to work. Town of Acton is currently seeking CDL drivers and also road laborers. The ideal candidates will be dependable and hardworking, the pay scale will range depending on experience and licenses held. These are part-time positions, for more information or details, please contact the town administrator. These will all be vetted through the road commissioners, just so you know, and not through me. Town of Acton is an equal-opportunity employer. Applications will be accepted until the ideal candidates are found, so. And if you notice, if you look in the, in the newspaper this week, you'll see a couple of neighboring towns looking for the exact same position, so. Let's hope they answer ours first.
Yeah, sounds like a tough position to fill. Saturday, October fourteenth.
I don't come to too many times, hoping to close, but I can't find any coverage for the Saturday and need it off for a personal day, so I'm gonna ask for you to close my office. I had to speak to code enforcement to see if, you know, what they wanted to do about their end of the building, if the board okayed it. And their attitude is always, we might as well close the whole town hall and keep it, you know, it's easier to advertise, but I need the Saturday off and my staff all has prior commitments. So.
I don't see an issue.
Neither do I.
I don't either.
Thank you. So I'm closing the whole town hall.
The whole town hall, excuse me, the whole town hall will be closed on Saturday, October fourteenth. General, sign, General Assistant's Adoption.
So this is the General Assistant's Ordinance, this just says that you, if you read it over, that you've had a public hearing. It's been available for the last seven days minimum, and you're gonna adopt the seventeen, eighteen numbers as set by the state.
Sign away.
Make a motion, we sign the General Assistant's Ordinance for 2017, eighteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Are you supposed to go on the top? I have a green pen, can you use yours? Assessors Return.
County taxes are due. They like that signed along with their check, which is due by the end of the month. It's just assessors return, saying that the valuation, is the best of your knowledge what it was when you committed taxes?
I'll give it a read. Pursuant to a warrant to us directed from the York County Commissioners for the York, for the County of York dated the twelfth day of July AD 2017, we have assessed the estates of the inhabitants and the estates of the non-resident proprietors of the Town of Acton in said county, the sum of three hundred, one thousand, three hundred, fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. And have committed lists thereof to the tax collector of said town with warrant in due form of law for collecting and paying same to the treasurer of the Town of Acton or her successor in said office to be paid by her to Frank P. Wood, treasurer of the County of York, or her successor in said office the first day of September 2017.
Make a motion, we sign the assessors' return.
I'll second that.
All in favor? It's a big bill. Okay, we are open for public comment.
Actually, I got two. One, the cemetery committee is now starting this fall walk I told you guys about earlier, so don't be surprised if we see us out and about. Come out and say hi, there's anywhere from, be two of us to five of us, depends upon who's out and what's going on. I'm taking off my hat to talk to you guys about the Hebo-Hibo. I'm actually the president of the Association of the Maple Grove Cemetery Association. We own to the middle of that road. We also have two lawyers that attend and come to our meetings. Once you have given us the land, it cannot be returned. We have access to tell you guys how to get in and how to get out. I, right now, we're having issues with the gentleman who got the permit all the way out back. We've had issues with him for over two years because he didn't have the legal right-of-way to get in. And I've actually put the road committee onto that, they're actually looking into a few things as far as that goes. So be aware of this before you go working on the Hebo-Hibo. We own to the middle, we intend to expand our cemetery to the middle, we've just talked about this this fall. So there is not gonna be a middle of the way.
Won't be a road?
Of the road, there's not, we own to the middle of that road.
So there will not be a road, once you put.
We're actually expanding out there, I actually talked to Kenny Paul over a period of two weeks ago, has the Cemetery Association to expand out there, there's a quarter acre that we're gonna actually go to the middle of the road.
And then nobody will be able to pass on the road?
We're having issues with that, yes, because we have a lot of stone damages. In fact, I also sent the road committee out to look at that also.
Do people own out and back there, though? I said, do people own out and back there?
They own back there, we can't landlock them, they can still have access back there, they're supposed to be foot, that's supposed to be foot only.
Oh, foot.
There's no, it's not supposed to be ATVs and all that out there. I can't, I can't run out and stop them, but I've actually had officers out there, I've had at least four or five sheriffs out there. I have the main state wardens that want us to shut it down. They've, they've had enough. All they got, all they have is garbage back there and the whole line ends.
Okay.
So before you guys get too hot on that, you better, we can't give it back to, state statute says we can't even give it back.
Time.
Oh, I'm a little hot.
Yeah, well, this is new information to me, so.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's good information to have, so.
I mean, we're owned by state statute, they can't take it. So I'm just letting you all know before you get too hot in the call, because, like I said, we got two lawyers involved in this at this point.
Did you, all right, thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment on that because we went up there and looked at it too. And the rock situation that she's talking about, being thrown up by the vehicles, there were rocks the size of my fist that had obviously been thrown back out of the cemetery. And when we checked the back of the tombstones, you could see the chips. And I could see whether it'd be severe damage. This is because groups are going through with four-wheelers, and I guess three hundred Jeeps went through, and they're fooling around. I, I don't know where you're gonna come to legally because you've got a big fat mess, but two solutions might be to provide at least a netting that could go up in the trees and protect, protect from the damage from the rocks until something gets straightened out. But this is beyond our committee, this is where you need a real heavy-duty lawyer.
Thank you.
I have two questions, first of all, as far as the job description for the assistant or the deputy CEO, besides the possible title change, are there any other changes other than the will was changed to May when it came to the amount of credentialing that the person should have?
In the very last sentence, there was clarification as to the chain of command and the order, or who the employee would, would report to first, that was, that was cleaned up.
Those are the only two things in the body of the.
That's correct, the board hasn't given me any other instructions.
Fine, the, the second question I had is, as far as the county tithing that we do to York County, is this an increase from last year? Is it an increase because our assessments increased, or is it actually an increase in the percent that they are taking? Could you answer that?
I can answer it for you, I can answer it for you next year, it would have been in the budget when we went through the process, they would have given us the number and we would have explained any change then, I don't know off the top of my head, but I will get it for you for next week.
I feel like it was two ninety-three last year.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it went up.
Yeah, it went up.
The percent as well as the number?
The number went, I'm not sure about the percent, I'll check into it.
Hi, Greg Vermette. My wife and I, we have a UTV, it's right out there now, and we drive down Hebo-Hibo Road. And we're not out there making a mess, throwing stuff around. But we know a gentleman that had, owns property that goes out to that road, he has a cabin out there. And we go in, partway down Orchard Road.
Going that way?
We cut down in. And we go out onto the power lines from there. So, I mean, I've seen a lot of people come up there before, not hustling around, not messing things up. And yes, I have seen some trucks down there that, you know, dig in a little more and, but. So is it a lawboat to go down that road now?
It sounds like it's private property, right now. Right now, it's private property.
At the end.
Tom Cashin, what, Tom Cashin was trying to work on is getting.
The town, the forest owns a piece of property down there, so he's.
Yeah, he's trying to get, gain access as a way to, to get to that town forest through a trail.
Okay, now how about if they block that road off, if there's a fire down there somewhere? How's a fire truck gonna get in there?
You ain't taking a fire truck out there.
We ain't taking a Hebo-Hibo fire truck out there, you're stuck.
You can go down the ways.
You're not supposed to, those two bridges are personal bridges that were put up there by the landowners. They can take them down at any point in time or put them up at any point in time.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you can't go down there the way.
Yeah, you can't.
Okay, we're moving on, anybody next? Public comment? Okay. Announcements. We have the sand bids that we're opening, or that are due October seventeenth. Mary Grant is having their pumpkin carving on Saturday, October twenty-first at four. Pumpkins will be provided, and they'll be food.
Did we find a, I saw that they were looking for a donation of them, did they find them, do we know?
I don't know if they did, but I, I was assured they, that they would have some.
Yeah, so chowder, piñata, marshmallow, roasting, all kinds of fun things.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Looks like fun.
And you're going to, I haven't had a chance to call Barbara, but you're gonna talk to the fire chief about getting this on their sign, where we have so many town things?
Yeah.
Sure.
The Zoning Board of Appeals, the Recreation Committee, they both have openings on their committees. And Kim's gonna let you know about our upcoming meetings.
They're gonna let me talk. Board of Select, they've got a meeting October tenth at 5:00 PM.
It's twelve.
Isn't that right now? Then we're gonna have a road committee meeting right after this at 6:00 PM. We're gonna have a special town meeting October twelfth at 7:00 PM.
If I can interrupt right there for one second.
Sure.
I won't be at the special town meeting, I'm actually gonna be to wake in self-care work for the self-care work fire chief. So I won't be here this Thursday, just to let everyone know. everyone know.
Thank you.
Continue.
Alrighty. They're gonna have the Marijuana Committee meeting, um, October thirteenth at six PM, and then Board of Selectmen's on the seventeenth at five PM, Planning Board will be on the nineteenth at seven PM, the Rec Committee will have a meeting on the nineteenth at seven PM, Board of Selectmen, twenty-fourth at five PM, we're gonna have a public hearing moratorium on October twenty-fourth at seven PM, and the Cemetery Committee's gonna meet on October twenty-sixth at five, and then the Board of Selectmen, our last meeting of October will be the thirty-first at, uh, five PM.
And the Forest Conservation just added a meeting on October seventeenth, double check, I believe you told me seven, but I need to look at my notes out there.
Okay. At this time, um, I also wanted to say that, um, uh, two different people passed away this week, um, one was Lori Driscoll, and, um, you know, we wanna send condolences to her family, and also Gay Whalen passed away this Saturday, and the same, you know, to her and her family, you know, we wanna give her our condolences.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Good night.